All right, I have a call to order, the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee, Tuesday, May 22nd. We're here at the Abington Middle High School Library. I'd ask everybody to stand, to salute the flag, and to remain standing afterwards for a brief moment of silence for Santa Fe and Stoughton. I'd ask the kids that are here if they want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Any kids that are here if they want to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh yeah.
Forgot that. Right, you can do it too, buddy.
Hi, you can do it.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job.
Thank you. So before we start, I know we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. This is our real first regular meeting since we've been reorganized, had town elections. I just want to first congratulate Lisa Augusta and Jackie Abrams on their election wins in the past town election in April. Welcome. Congrats. At the same time, Mike Karowski and Kathy Bailey both stepped down as a result of the election. I just want to acknowledge both of them, their time here. They both served two terms, six years, multiple subcommittees for all of them. Kathy served as a chair, a vice chair, a secretary of the committee, and Mike served as vice chair along with numerous subcommittees as well. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge their time serving the town as well. All right, thank you. First order of business, a hearing of visitors. Anybody that would like to speak at this time, let me know and you can. Okay, seeing nobody, we'll move on. For the reading and approval of records, we have three different meetings we have to approve the minutes for. The first one is going to be the last meeting we had, which was May 8th. If anybody wants to take a look at the minutes and when you're done, make a motion in a second.
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 8th, or all of them?
No, just May 8th, yeah.
I'll second him.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the next set, and this will apply to the one after it as well, we do not have a majority of people here tonight that were in attendance at those meetings. However, the Attorney General does allow members who were not there to vote the minutes in if we need to. Otherwise, we'll be sitting here and we won't be able to move any further. Just so you do know though, Wendy was the only one that was present at the April 27th that's currently here, and myself and Wendy were the only ones at the April 24th. But everybody is able to vote on it based on reading the minutes and making a motion off of it. So same deal, for the April 27th minutes, if you want to take a look at it, I'll look for a motion in a second to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve them.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
And so next order again would just be the April 24th minutes.
I'll make the...
Okay, perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 24th.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
So now we get that out of the way. Moving on to order of business, the first item on the agenda is the Principals' Reports. I'd like to welcome Catherine Zinni from Beaverbrook Elementary School to present, and Lori Goldber as well. Sorry, sorry Lori. Go ahead Catherine.
Thank you everyone for having us. So tonight we are going to go over the Beaverbrook Elementary School's school improvement plan, the accomplishments from the... the accomplishments from the past year, and moving forward what our goals are for the next year. And with us tonight to help you all learn about what we have done and where we hope to go are students from Beaverbrook with Mrs. Goldber. Mrs. Goldber, would you like to introduce them to everyone this evening, please?
These are our wonderful students at Beaverbrook, and they'll introduce themselves, starting with...
My name is Joseph Cork and I'm in room 11.
Who's that?
Second group.
Mine is Patrick Manahan, and I'm in room 5.
What grade is that, Patrick?
My name is Olivia, and I'm in room 11.
So you'll be seeing these bright cheery faces again because they have helped with the creation of a video to walking through Beaverbrook School. Before we go any further, also, we'd like to thank our school improvement plan, school council members. That would be our parents, Mrs. Theodore Zaccardi, and Ms. Carolyn Rousseau, and our staff members, Ms. Nancy McShary, Ms. Lauren Fitch, and we had help this year from Justin Shanahan from Abington Camp. So together, this group has worked hard on one of our key initiatives, which was to provide a glimpse of Beaverbrook School to the community, and that's what you're about to see now. So on the slide you're seeing now, what we did this year was try to blend the prior center school and the Beaverbrook School. So what each grade did, and what many staff did, was in conjunction with the PTO and with the Abington Education Foundation, we all got together and pooled our resources. And schools in the past, the center school might have done some activities, and Beaverbrook might have done some activities, and the PTO at each school might have done activities, and school councils at each school might have done activities. We did them all this year so that in subsequent years, we can figure out what is going to work for all of us together as one school. So we had the Kindness Rocks Project, we had the Allergy Guide, we had the Boosterthon Fun Run, which we're very happy to say has funded a lot of equipment and supplies for our school, culminating in Mrs. Ina riding a bicycle. We had the Grammy Burks Memorial, so that was with Mrs. Frederick. We were in the St. Patrick's Day Parade and won a first prize award. We had many school spirit days as well, and Bingo, and the Fly Department providing health and wellness support. We also participated in the softball charity for one of our own students and families, and that was a school-wide effort, a lot of our teacher leaders taking on the role of coordinating many aspects of it. We also had our annual Veterans Day program. We had many spirit days and school assemblies, such as the staff getting together for the Patriots' pep rally. We had assemblies where we learned about the tattletale tongue versus bullying and what is informing. We had meetings together and talking with other grades and how to have a conversation with someone you don't know. We also had many spirit dress days, as you can tell by what we're wearing. And we also had a lot of our students throughout the year talk about belonging at Beaverbrook, character traits, and what they learned when school started, how hard things were and now how easy they are. And here are our same students helping with the technology to talk to you through video.
Welcome to Beaverbrook. This evening we are going to learn what needs to be improved in our mother's school culture. All right, the first question, friends, that we're going to ask you is how do you know you belong? Will you? And so when you walked in, how did you feel? Joe? What does it feel like when you ask somebody and they let you on? Because they're here, they can actually answer the question, how you lie, since you can't here, no improvised. All right, so how did you know you belonged at BEES? And what was hard for you? All right, so how did you know you belonged to Joe's stuff?
Um, when I played, when I played kickball at recess, and when other people played kickball, they let me be on the team.
And that's what Joseph thinks. Do you have a chance?
When I played kickball recess, I asked, "No, are you mean?" And he said, "Yes."
I really liked to come here because it looked really fun and I really liked it.
Okay, so what was hard for you when you started school in September that you now become better at?
Math.
And that was just... And how did you make a new friend?
You just have to play with your friends.
Exactly, and it's that easy, right? And how did you become better at math?
I am art teachers and maybe even actual teachers.
Exact, right, and it takes a lot of what? Practice. It does take practice, doesn't it? It takes practice to be a good friend, too? It does, a lot of practice. Excellent. Now our live view.
As you can see, we're a very flexible board.
We are.
You did a very nice job. So as Mr. Coyle knows, because he was also part of our school council group through the school committee, we infused technology into a lot of what we did this year. We had three main goals, and they are pretty much remaining the same goals for the next year. The first goal was to provide rigorous and relevant curriculum and instruction in the optimal learning environment. Second goal was to continue the development of a positive climate and sense of belonging for students, families, and staff. The third goal is to improve communication within the Beaverbrook Elementary School community, as well as our local and global community. So for those who are reading along, if you look at the summary of our prior year, I'm going to just go over our highlights from each goal. So the most... accomplishment we are most proud of this year is the embedded professional development that led us to a more balanced literacy framework for our reading block. So we were switching over from the newly adopted Wonders program, and we were switching from a more whole-class instruction type of framework to small groups with meaningful, relevant activities so kids could say, as Joe said, to practice, so they could get better at skills that they were working on. And we were working on differentiated instruction, which simply means that we're trying to meet the needs of kids wherever they're starting from. So if kids need extra help, two kids are on level, two kids are beyond the level they're at, so that everyone makes growth throughout the year. So that was what one of our major accomplishments was this year, and that we really strove to do that through all our classrooms and all the grade levels. We also explored a lot of digital tools in that area that came with the Wonders program, that we have in the Envision program, the Boosterthon money that we had last year to get tablet convertible laptops. In Goal Two, one of our major accomplishments this year was to build relationship activities between staff, and families, and with the students themselves. So we had an educator leader group, some people might call it a teacher leader group, but we had staff members from all different departments on it. So it's not really a teacher leader group, it's an educator leader group. And they met in the summer on their own time and decided on what spirit activities there would be for students, trying to give parents a heads-up notice for those who went to broadcaster, and the automated emails from Constant Contact, and from our Facebook, and from our website. And then we also had events for staff to participate in, and then we had events at the school as well that staff and students participated in, and then we had family events. Some of them were the Boo Bash, the Someone Special Dance, the Fenway Day, Patriots' Pep Rally, Smile Day, Autism Awareness Day, Jump Rock Baha, Dot Day, Dr. Sust Day, Taint Night, and many, many more. In Goal Three, our improvement of communication, one of the major tasks that the school council undertook was to get our Facebook page up and running. We noticed that a lot of our elementary families, rather than using Twitter, we used Facebook. So Mrs. Goldber was instrumental, we found the Green Law from the Woodsdale Schools, we transitioned over, and the school council itself, and we were able to transfer ownership and set it up, because for those who are unaware, there is a Beaverbrook in Abington, Pennsylvania. We have a Beaverbrook, Abington, Massachusetts Facebook page, for those who are looking. Yes, who knew, huh? So we've been really marketing and branding ourselves, you can find our page. And the goal of that endeavor was to make sure that the community, far and wide, not just locally, is able to get a glimpse of Beaverbrook inside. So for those who follow our Facebook, you can see hundreds of postings of academic and events. And that has been a real project that came to fruition, and we're very proud of that. Those are some of our major accomplishments of the many related to the school improvement plan from the past year. What about the upcoming year? So again, we have the same three goals because we were working on blending the two schools into one. And we had students who were new to Abington, moving in from center school, from the preschool, the kindergarten coming, we had our third and fourth grade lead. So we had a major reconfiguration as the whole district did, so that was where our focus was. So again, as I mentioned earlier, we did a lot of everything because you have to go through everything to figure out how do you make your new traditions, and what instructional practices should we have that continue through the grades and move on to the Woodsdale, the middle school, and the high school, and lead to graduation. So when you look at Goal One, for those who are following along on page eight, if you look at section three, what we are going to continue to do is we had a lot of initial training, and we had a lot of training in keys to literacy, balanced literacy, technology, Focus K2, some in morning meeting, and some recently in safety. What our goal is next year is to take those instructional practices and those concepts and trainings and become more expert in them and integrating them together, because we want an optimal learning environment, so that's where your safety factor comes in, and your character traits. And then we want to have a rigorous and relevant curriculum, which is where our keys to literacy, which focuses on graphic organization, comprehension, vocabulary, mixed into our balanced literacy, which is how we teach reading and what we're teaching in reading, using our Wonders program. But Wonders is just a program with all the pieces we put together. Focus K2 is a unit of study-based instruction with a lot of hands-on activities, so combining all of that is what we have strived to do in a more excellent fashion, as we dive deeper into it and connect everything together, and then work vertically from K to two. So that is one of our major accomplishments, we hope to come back next year to say that we have achieved. Any questions so far, or shall we keep going?
I am going to have some questions on the goal. Would you rather the questions be individual to the goal?
I'm asking you, that's why I'm stopping now. Do you want me to go through the whole, all three goals and wait questions at the end, or do you want to do a goal by goal?
I'd like to thank the children first who came out, because you just did a really hard job speaking in front of all of these people, and I know it's probably passed some people's bedtime, too. So thank, it was really nice to have you show us everything that you do at Beaverbrook and how it feels to belong. This is a big, important job, and you guys did a great job. And so, I don't know, this is going to take, like, I think that as we get into it...
Why don't we, excuse me, why don't we wait till you wrap up, but then we'll just do questions at the end of it?
Sure.
Okay. So on Goal Two, where we are continuing the development of a positive climate and a sense of belonging, because we are still trying to meld two schools together as one, and as I mentioned, we did a lot of everything, and now we have to filter and see what is a good match and what benefits our students most, whether time on instruction, and time for enrichment, and time just to get to know each other and become the Beaverbrook community. So when we look at that, we are looking at our... we started a little bit with morning meeting, but we had many initiatives, and we were trying to balance people that already done morning meeting, people who are used to doing their own, started the school day, kind of calendar rut time, so we wanted to see what people were doing. So our next school year, we are going to focus more on morning meeting, and continue a lot with our bucket fillers, which is helping good and helping other people have a better day, making someone's life better, one person at a time. We are hoping to infuse that throughout the entire school, and that also helps our students become confident people who are willing to take a risk, which is what they did tonight. They got up in front of people they don't know to speak, and they're used to doing the announcements in the morning at school, so they're already public speakers, it's not just people looking at them, giving them over the intercom. So that is one of our major focuses for next year. And then in Goal Three, one of our major focuses, if you're flipping over to the next page, we are going to continue with our communication need. We started this year, and it was harder than we thought. Thank goodness for our tech department, Rich and Oliver, and for Justin from Abington Camp. We have started making very short videos, some were ten seconds, up to three minutes, of life at Beaverbrook, and procedures and processes, so that new students coming in and families who want to know how to do something, or just get a glimpse of what the day's like, will have better access to that and be able to see it through mini videos. We have a lot of them in a rough draft, it is harder to edit than we thought. So we are working on that, and we are hoping to have some of those up and running in August. We have one that is almost to fruition, I believe Mr. Coyle, you were there to see the cafeteria one?
Yep.
Few more little glitches to work on, and it should be ready to go. So, and that we are going to keep working on our Facebook, and what we want to do on our Facebook next year is add more of an academic component. This year, we had a lot of funding and resources and planning from our PTO and AED, so we wanted to make sure we include that in a lot of our spirit days to show how we're coming together as a school, so we want to balance that more with some insight into our academic piece next year. That's where we're at.
Perfect. Catherine, just before we go, I just want to let the parents know, I know you've got young kids, if you want to feel free to go, no offense whatsoever, and I'm taking, thank you so much. I had to get up in the middle last night out of nowhere and have to try to explain something, so I know how that can be. So thank you so much for your help. You can obviously stay if you'd like, but please feel free to go if you need to go, I understand completely. Trust me...
Thank you so much for coming with them, because they don't know how to drive yet. Some have to get...
As I told Joseph before we started, you guys were the best part of the night. No offense to everybody else.
Good job, thank you for coming.
Bye, guys. No problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good day, good night, bye.
Anyone have any questions?
I have one, Catherine. And it more focuses because I feel like it was, Beaverbrook was unique to a point where Woodsdale was kind of just a shift, the high school was, it stayed kind of together. The middle school had this too, but with you having the youngest group, how did you feel the merging of center school, the kindergarten piece of center school, while you also lost two grades? So you almost became a younger elementary school. How do you think that went, and what do you think you can do to improve it going forward?
I'm a note taker.
No, that's fine, I understand, yeah, me too.
So when I look at how we merged, we really switched over in a philosophical way to more of an early childhood center, not quite at the ADP level yet, preschool, but that's what we became. So when we were looking at a problem of behavior intervention, like how will all be known? We looked at bucket fillers was used at the preschool, kindergarten, and we were using components of morning meeting. So that's why we did both, so that we could see how we could integrate together. So we really became this year a teaching of social etiquette, I guess we would call it, so that students had to... these are the years where they learn how to function in a group away from home. At home, you might have maybe up to six children in your house, and here you have 25, all the same age, 130 to 50 of you all at lunch. So we spent a lot of time as a school figuring out how to have teachable moments, because third and fourth grade, there's a little more accountability in terms of that, because you know the social etiquette of how to be on a team, how to make a friend, what to do when you don't know any of the grownups and we're all new. So we spent a lot of time on that piece as blending the schools together. And then again, as I mentioned, we had a lot of different activities this year for parents who come to a lot of events, have seen them on Facebook, or if they want to be invested, a lot of live events. We did a lot of them because we didn't want to remove anything without seeing what they were like, and everyone was very inclusive. So if someone's doing Kyle the Allergy Guide, then instead of just being one grade, it was everyone. So now we have to sort out what's going to be a tradition for each grade, such as kindergarten wants to make sure they are the ones who do the veterans program. So the other grades are like, okay, we'll take on something else. So that's what they're sorting through this past year, and that's where we're at, that discussion piece of what's going to be our traditions as a whole school, and what's going to be individual for each grade. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yep, thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Congratulations on being here.
Oh, thanks. My questions, I just, for parents who might be watching at home or later watching this, so these school improvement plan documents are really important, they're like the vision really for the school, and I know that they can be found in the school committee link, right, Teresa?
Yes, and on the school's each individual school page.
That's what I thought, too. So if anybody later on wants to see these goals in person, I think it's important to ask questions about some of these things because it's a lot, this is the substance really. So on Goal Number One, I wanted to just say for Goal Number One, Number Three, I love the, for the indicator of accomplishment, the idea of offering peer modeling and observation, which I guess would mean that you're going to have, some of these keys to literacy, balanced literacy, you're going to have staff within the building modeling for each other?
So we started that this year, and that was on a voluntary basis, because it's very scary for people who don't know each other well to have someone come in your room. So if we notice someone doing something really well, like how you transitioned from, to your small groups, or a meaningful activity you did to work on vocabulary or oral reading fluency, then we'd say, would you mind if someone could come in your room and see just that point? And Miss Goldber or myself, or someone else, say, we'll teach your class, because you can't leave a reading class to go to a reading class at the same time, right? We're both teachers too, so we'll teach for you, or someone else would, so you can go see that part, and then you could ask about it. So we started some of that, and that was for parents and for teachers. So that has been on a voluntary basis, and it was in all subjects, and it went from better organization of snack time all the way up to watch how this person teaches phonics, is that what you were looking to know how to do? So we started on a very small scale, and we are hoping to expand that as more people have participated and saw that wasn't so scary, and now I learned something from them and they learned something from me. We would love to go to that video piece, again, that iPad is a work in progress, and then about how do we store those?
And then just a quick question on the same category there, increasing student center... And then just a quick question on the same category there, increasing student-centered engagement strategies using PD. Could you just share with us some of the student engagement strategies you're working on or hoping to see spread throughout Beaverbrook?
So some of our student-centered engagement strategies, one of them is making sure that we have lots of materials for students to read. And that was another huge accomplishment, but I wanted to keep this short, so I didn't name them all. So again, thanks to the PTO, thanks to the Abington Education Foundation, thanks to the Lions Club. We are very fortunate to have had money available for donations so that we could purchase many books. And also Dr. Fredorowitz wrote a grant that gave us hundreds more books. So we have created a literacy closet and we have book bags, not all in the classrooms yet, but in many of the classrooms. So students have books at their just-ready-to-read level, their a little bit harder level, their instructional level, and books that someone else could read with them, that they might want to partner read or echo read. And that alone is one of our main student engagement strategies right now that we have tried really hard to implement, giving students books at their interest level, their readability level, their listening comprehension level. And tying that into, we have reading counts and we're using Epic, which is an online resource as well, that has, and Myon, which has some Read Aloud, which was a grant, I believe through the special ed department, thank you, Dr. Thomas. So all of that piece, giving kids books to read on what they want to read about so that they enjoy reading, so they will read more, which then improves their vocabulary and improves their comprehension, leading them to pass the NCSE graduate, get a job, work in a nonprofit. That's one of our student-centered. Another piece was adding, a lot of people will see it as games. We see it as purposeful play. So in kindergarten with our Focus K2, giving kids time to actually finish something they start. They're making wolf dens, or they're working on habitats for salmon. To give them, again, a lot of multisensory activities, painting, blocks, movement, drama. That piece of it combined with some worksheets and then some games so that you're taking turns, you're conversing, you're talking to each other. Did you get that? Did I get that? Do we agree or disagree? Why is it the same? Why is it different? So I guess we'll call it accountable talk. It's called thinking and feedback in the trainings we've been working on, that kids do that with each other as a student-centered engagement piece because when they're talking about what they're learning, they're putting it in their heads so that they can use it later. Because when you can teach someone else or explain to someone else that you know it well yourself. And that also leads, another student-centered engagement piece is inclusion, so that we have students who have some significant challenges in behavior, some significant challenges cognitively, some significant challenges in self-control, significant challenges in learning to read. So again, by having everyone throughout the school, people are not strangers, everyone belongs, everyone gets opportunity, everyone gets to try, and we really are working hard on a philosophy of not yet. And that's a student-centered engagement strategy that many people don't think about as a strategy, that it's okay to try, it's okay if you don't know it because you will. And that's why we had one of our questions asked of our students, what was hard, but is now easier for you. So those are some of the student-centered engagement strategies we're working on at this time. Anything else for anyone else on goal one?
Anybody else, guys? Lisa? I think we're all set. Thank you, Catherine.
No, nothing else?
I don't, do you have any more?
I just wanna say one thing if that's right. I just wanna let you know that I love seeing the video, the pictures. And that's really important to, I think, especially at this grade level, to see all the spirit days and the enrichment programs and the social etiquette teaching. I know that this year, you were trying to see where you were at and what you were going to focus on next year, but I just really hope that continues because school at this age should be really fun. And the K2 program is, I've seen that in action and is awesome, so I'm really glad you guys are keeping up with that.
So we're trying to infuse more thematic unit types of things. An example with the Wonders program, we're looking this year at alignments. We're looking at what were their science and social studies themes that are in the curriculum frameworks in Massachusetts that are also in Wonders, that are also in the Focus K2 so that we can better align for the next school year. Because teachers have a lot of supplemental and enrichment materials, and again, the AEF, Coons Foundation also, and the PTO have provided a lot of resources, funding and enrichment to coordinate that. We also have our teachers use Class Dojo, which is like a texting but with video allowed, and Remind, which is like texting with just pictures. So all of those pieces as well, we're trying to give a really good glimpse of, here's what we do, and we do want to add that academic piece so that you have a balance of seeing what our students are learning and how they're learning, as well as the fun they're having within learning and just for enrichment to become well-rounded citizens. So thank you, everyone, including our members, our families from home who are here today, including Ms. Akari, who is on our school council, who spends a lot of time with us on Monday evenings. So thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thanks, Catherine. So next, the school improvement plan for the Abington Early Education Program, Laura Monacino. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura Everduddy. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the people that served on the school council for the Abington Early Education Program. My faculty representative was Susan Keaty, who is our speech language pathologist. We had two parent representatives, Harla Venesis and Pam Neely. And our school committee liaison was Jeanette Leary. We had a very successful, busy year working together, talking about the goals that we set forth this year and then devising new goals for next year. I'm gonna start by just giving you a brief summary, some of our success stories from the 2017 to 18 goals. Our first goal was to develop and implement preschool and pre-kindergarten curriculum in alignment with standards and NA, curriculum with standards and NA EYC accreditation requirements. And the gist of that for us, to break that down a little bit for you, all along, we have been treating preschool as just preschool. And we took a look at it in the years that I was with the program and said, there's really two grade levels going on here. We see it as being the preschool bringing the younger kids, the threes and newly fours, and the pre-kindergarten being the fours and even moving into fives. And we wanted to differentiate that and really treat it as two grade levels. So one of the things we worked really hard on this year, and I give the teachers just endless amounts of credit, is creating new curriculum and activities to address those two grade levels. So where they had previously been essentially repeating the program from the morning program into the afternoon, now the students are getting different materials. It's just particularly nice for those students who do spend the whole day, or for those who've come with us and are actually with us for three years based on the time that they age into the program. So we have been able to do that. We have introduced activities to begin addressing technology standards even at this early age, starting to get kids turning on computers, using the mouse, starting some keyboarding and things along those lines. They're really good with the iPads and the phones already, they're doing that on their own. But those are not in the technology standards, those are not the things that they need to learn from us. And then we've also done some focusing on identified skill needs during our center activities. So things like even teaching kids how to put on coats. A lot of the times, we're seeing our kids coming in as three-year-olds now and they don't have the skill sets that they once had coming to us. And so we're taking advantage of that center time that used to be one more academic, one more artsy-craftsy, and one more self-directed. And we're introducing new skills so that there's extra practice. And it does frankly make it easier to get out of your recessing time when you've learned how to put on coats. So those are some of the success stories for goal number one. Goal number two, to successfully achieve NA EYC reaccreditation. Wow, was that taking on a lot. It was my first time through this process and I had no clue the magnitude. I can't tell you the results of that yet, but I can tell you that we had our site visit today and they're returning tomorrow. Everybody put in a phenomenal amount of time, effort, energy, love into getting the program portfolio together, the classroom portfolios together, making the booms look fantastic. It was truly not just a program endeavor, but it was district-wide. We had help from the tech department, I had endless help from central office, Teresa Minahan being among them. And so really, district-wide, people were very helpful in this process and I hope to be able to come back to you in a couple of months and say that, yes, we did it. But they did come today and it was a successful first day as far as you can tell, but they don't give up much. Goal number three, maximizing the opportunities and resources afforded by relocation to this new beautiful facility. And we're really scratching the surface on, I think, what's available to us, but we have done some exciting things. We have had high school volunteers come in on almost a daily basis and help out with the kids. We've had students from the child development class do projects and volunteer within the program. We were able to hold a little bit, a little Halloween parade through the halls and that was exciting for the kids in my program, but it was also exciting for the high schoolers, let me tell you, they were cheering, high-fiving, it was beautiful. And then our kids were able to attend a holiday concert that was held here in the high school area. We've made some use of the gym and we are looking to make further use of that going forward, so for indoor recess and just movement opportunities. And the students that stay all day access the Green Wave Cafe and it's absolutely adorable. They take their little cart down and they get the food and then they walk the cart back and it's usually the same kids and they're quite popular now, they're getting high-fives from all the students as well. So, as I said, we're scratching the surface on that. I think there's a lot more that we can do and I'm looking forward to it, but it was a success for the first year. Then, goal number four was to provide ongoing opportunities to reinforce the principles of citizenship, social skills, resilience, and core values. And much like Mrs. Zinni was saying, a lot of what education is at this young age is helping kids to become little people within a society as opposed to within the home. And some of the things that we've done to that end are, we did continue and carried over the bucket filler program that we were using over at center school. And so that is still in the works for us. We do direct social skills instruction in the classrooms at various times during the year. And we had a social work intern who was absolutely outstanding and was able to make great strides with us in that area this year. We did only one community service event this year because we were so busy with the NA EYC, but we conducted an incredibly successful food drive. It hasn't been picked up yet from the food pantry, so I can't tell you how many pounds, but we moved it into a closet today and it was very heavy, so it was a lot. And then, the last thing that we're going to be doing in the coming weeks is, we call it the Only One You Project. It's a lovely book called Only One You. And I'll be reading that aloud in each of the classes. And then each of the kids will be painting a rock to represent themselves. And then we put those rocks all together to represent the community. And what we'd like for that to do is those kids can then take that rock with them when they move forward to Beaverbrook, is showing them their community is living with them. And then, our goal number five this past year was to market and showcase the Abington Early Education Program as a premier foundation for the continuum of learning in Abington public schools. We created a logo, kinda small here, but you can see it's based on the Abington logo instead of the...
Little A.
We have a little A. And we refer to ourselves as the Abington Early Education Little Waves. And then the PTO was able to get that put onto shirts for us and those have been ordered. There was a delay, so we haven't been able to wear our shirts yet, but we're very excited. I think they're coming in next week, so they'll have the wave on it. And it will reference that the Abington Little Waves are bucket fillers. We have a very active Facebook page in addition to the website that's affiliated with the schools, the district site. Our enrollment, both in special education, but also the period of education, goes through the roof. And I think that speaks volumes that we have shown what we are able to offer here as a district and as a program. And I'm just gonna lay it out there because I'm very proud of it for what my staff have created. We're getting accolades now from all the early intervention providers. And AVA providers around the region are telling us that they are telling everybody to move to Abington to receive our services. If you build it, they will come. Then you have to find places to put them. So that is the summary of this past year, which again is very successful. NA EYC did eat up a lot of our time, so you'll note that the goals for the upcoming year, some of them have carried over because I think we want to continue with the good work that we started with. Goal number one, we're going to continually identify and implement developmentally appropriate curricular materials and activities, continuing to differentiate instruction between the preschool and pre-kindergarten levels. And one of the areas that we're really gonna focus on next year is increasing the use of technology so that we can get more of those technology standards, as well as make use of a lot of the things that we have in this facility that we have really just only scratched the surface of. We have interactive whiteboards that have the capability to project onto the ground so that little kids can actually move around and interact with the materials in that way. And then we've actually looked into piloting some programs that are iPad-based, so that's an area focused for us for next year. We again want to maximize the opportunities and resources afforded by being co-located in this facility. And basically, just building on what we've done this year, looking to extend it further, maybe get more involvement with the child development classes, have more students doing projects with us. I've reached out to Kate Casey, she's interested in helping pursue that as well. Goal number three, we want to continue with providing ongoing opportunities to teach and reinforce good citizenship, social skills, resilience, and core values. Next year, we're hoping to do more community service projects because we won't be doing reaccreditation. And we want to continue to build up that bucket filler program. The PTO has supplied us with a board, standing board, so we're gonna put all kinds of bucket fillers, who was the bucket filler of the week and so forth, things like that, to really get it out there and make it even more exciting for the kids. And it's nice that that then carries over when we go over to Beaverbrook School. And then, goal number four is something that as a committee we agreed upon was an area of need for us, was strengthening the parent and community involvement engagement. So we'd like that to be a big focus next year. We're looking to really increase the PTO involvement engagement, exploring maybe offering various times to hold the PTO meetings so it's more accessible to families. We're looking to run a series of social events, again, at various times of the day so that it's accessible to families. We've begun to create some resource centers for families within the facility so they can pick up packets, things that they might need to know, what's going on in the community, where they can get help, where they can get dental care, all those types of things. And we're also looking to really build up our volunteer opportunities in the classrooms now that the teachers are comfortable with the facility, they know how they're running their classrooms in this new space, now they're ready to bring other people in and help them help us.
Not so much a question, but I'm just, I'm thrilled to hear about the opportunities, like about being here, because I know one of the biggest things about putting the pre-K here with the high school was to have that, that interaction where the high school kids are interested in it. My daughter goes to the early education program. She loves when the older kids are coming in. My son went there before that and he loved when, might have been sixth graders that came, I can't remember now.
Right, the buddies.
Yeah, but they, I know that the sixth graders and Dr. Sullivan, you can probably speak to the high school kids, love that opportunity. I know the younger kids love it as well. So I just wanted to mention that. I hope that the rest of the use of the facility continues as best you can whenever you need the information, when you need the ability to use things, everything works out.
Yeah, it's been great. And I really do see that there's a lot of room for growth in that, scheduling with Kate Casey for more gym access, lots of things in the works.
Okay, great.
Continue that.
Yes, just, by deliberate design, one of the things that we try to do is have those multi-age group meetings between our students because I think our older students behave better because they realize they're role models and it's healthy for them. And they know that our younger students aspire to be those older students. And we find that kids listen to each other when they're listening to older kids, a lot of times better than they listen to us. So as these transition activities occur between buildings too, it's critical to do those kinds of things to create a bigger sense of community, so.
Can I ask a quick question, of course? For goal one, it says consideration of the Waterford curriculum pilot, and it was deferred. What do you mean by that?
It was a curriculum that Dr. Fredorowitz and I identified, what was it, two months ago, I think, a year or so?
February, September. We have the Myon.
We have the Myon in the upper elementary. We wanted something equivalent to get kids engaged, kids more technology, more online, recognizing letters and starting the first pieces of reading. And so, we had a table, I think we ended it with a snowstorm. Our PD got switched, and then the NAYC came in. And so we were looking at, actually, they're going to be contacting us later this month or next month, but we might have to table it from the beginning of next year. So we're looking at two different options for early elementary.
And what's the other option?
There's a Myon version.
Oh, the Myon, okay. And then, I just, I want to say that I love the Only You Project. I think that's awesome to be able to bring them around to Beaver Brook when they go. And then, if you guys are selling shirts, I would definitely take one. I love the little A.
I will put you down for one. Would you like long or short sleeves?
Both.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I just had one follow-up compliment.
One second.
Just a compliment to what Chris was saying about utilizing the space.
Yes.
I love that in goal number two, you took the time to really spell out item number three, which is optimizing movement opportunities. I think we get ourselves in trouble sometimes when we're so focused on curriculum, that we, I just love that it got its own line, and that I hope that they'll be able to, I love this indoor recess in the gym and access to the fields and courts. I think that we have this beautiful space, and I just applaud you for finding, giving it its own line, because it's important.
Thank you, thank you. I'm an athlete myself, so I like to bring that in.
Anybody else? Thanks, Laura.
Thanks.
Ask Dr. Sullivan. Laura? Okay.
So I'm just talking about the student handbook changes that are proposed for next year. There are five pretty straightforward kind of logical changes or enhancements. I think you have a copy of this. So the first one is a handbook change to our buyback option. Right now, students are not allowed to buy back two days in a row, and the proposed change is to just delete that from the language so they can buy back as many days as they can in a row. How the buyback works is that they're in school for five days, they get a day back that they were out for. So if we allow them to do more, they'll be more, they'll be in school more consecutive days. So it doesn't make sense to limit it, because to allow them more time in school is better. So they'll be able to buy back.
Five days and for one week, they didn't get a day, then five weeks, the next day they didn't get a day.
Yeah, so right now, you can't do it back-to-back. You're not supposed to be able to do it that way. So instead, it's just you can keep buying back if you need to. Eventually, you don't have to, because you've been in school all that time.
Right.
The second one is the Green Wave Gazette. It's the school newspaper. They would like to add, to be a member in good standing, students must publish four works in an academic year. The reasoning is because that's what other local high schools are doing, and we want to be a respected competing newspaper. We want to kind of keep in line with other areas of schools. The third one is our electronic equipment. This one is kind of just an addition of some language for clarity and transparency. We wanted to add the words including earbuds. And then, the use of cell phones and audio devices in the halls is not allowed because we're going to add the word, it's unsafe and disruptive. So we just have disruptive right now, but it's unsafe because the students can't hear and talk to them. So just to kind of safety, and then we're adding the earbud piece because it is actually part of the audio device. So just for that clarity on that one. The fourth one is just a quick language change. Our announcements aren't necessarily announced anymore every day. Sometimes they're projected, so we just said are available during advisory every day, just to make it clear. And then, the last one is for field trips. There's a line in our field trip policy that says, it is important to note that February international trip is generally the week preceding the winter tournament. It was recommended we remove this line because it's the only thing that's listed there, which is odd, because lots of things conflict with field trips. So it seems out of place to have one listed.
Okay.
Yeah. And that is the only change.
Any questions on it? I've been looking for a motion to approve the revisions as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve of.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank Laura.
Then I'll do the school.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't do a norm used space, but if the AEP is going to use the gym, can we use the playground?
Up to 88.
Probably like that. I'd just like to thank all the people that have worked all year on our school, including Lynn, teachers, Carrie Velasco, Mrs. Crowley, parents, Paula McNasko, Stephen Maguire, Alicia Morando, community rep Ellen Harris, and students Alyssa Gendereau, who's a graduating senior, and Fraser Toomey, junior, and non-voting members, assistant principal Lukeau, and school community rep Jeanette Leir. Student achievements, I think, are pretty self-explanatory, and two pages worth, probably not a time for me to discuss, but I do want to highlight just number one, and I think we've talked about that before, but being a level-one school for two years now and then being a commended school by the state, we have applied for the Blue Ribbon Award because that's the recognition is lucky you, you get to apply. Here's the 32-page document. We have applied, and we did put it in on time. And I just think, if you have any questions on the achievements, they're listed here on the website as well. And we use those, we use those two pages for eighth-grade orientations and things. Put them in a slideshow, so just tell the community what we've done well. Summary. Hey, Jay. We had five goals last year, and I just put a couple of goals that I thought were highlighted. And obviously, with the student achievement goals, we talked about the commended school status. We also, Ms. Lukeau and I added a social justice class. The timing couldn't have been better this year, and thought we could teach a class into our schedule. We're not very good at it. But we used that in a combination with the one-to-one technology initiative. We said we would pilot. So we have about 12 kids, and we're piloting using the technologies. They each got a laptop, so we worked through. We also didn't have the software we wanted at the time, but we used Teams, Microsoft Teams instead. So the kids have been awesome and really helpful, and they have feedback surveys for us that will help us implement the initiative, you know, school-wide, you know, next year. You know, what worked, what didn't work, and the struggles with keeping them powered up, having them with them, you know, things like that, simple kinds of things. But even for us, I think it was a great, for us to learn how to communicate with them also. Goal number two, research and influence best practice, best practice to support social emotional wellness. What teachers have been asking for, information about students who are struggling, particularly students who are in crisis emotionally, but obviously, there's that fine line between, you know, HIPAA, FERPA, and privacy and confidentiality. So what we did, thanks to Rich Wykowski, we added an icon in X2, so the teacher can see that the student is being tracked and followed by the student support team, but we don't really have any details about that. And then sometime, and the only person putting information in is the school psychologist. So we worked that through our student support team, and I think that was, made teachers feel more comfortable, because they fill out forms to track students, and they don't always know what comes after that. So knowing that they're being tracked by the team, I think, is helpful. Teachers said that's what they wanted, and they appreciate that. That same social justice class developed a kindness campaign. We're still working through many of those things. One of the things they happen to do is teacher appreciation, doing some things for the seniors as well next week. We're not talking about what. We're always analyzing student performance data. I think the particularly two big projects were the one, you know, working through a one-to-one initiative and practicing how that might work, and evaluating the summer reading program that we started last year, and how we can roll that out next year, explaining that. So that took a lot of CPT time to evaluate how the reading program rolled out last year. Supporting programs that are safe and substance-free, tolerant, conducive to education. The new schedule was, you know, a proposal wasn't conducive to the committee and the district, but I think it was important that we do propose it. The MCAS, John Avio Adams Scholarship, we used to do a breakfast, and we invited families and the students who won the scholarship. This year, we added it to the pep rallies and the athletic event, and kids seemed to love it. So we added an academic piece to a pep rally, so it wasn't just athletic, and we loved it, thought it was great, so we're going to continue to do that as well. And EAS, we began our self-study process. It's very different than it was five years ago. We will have a visiting team come for collaborative conference in November, and then we'll have our decennial visit 2020. New goals, four instead of five. The only difference here is we combined the social-emotional piece into goal three, safe, substance-free, tolerant, respectful, et cetera. Seemed to make sense. We did a lot in social-emotional. We feel comfortable adding it there. And so, I have just the four goals we want to work on next year, and all the activities there. I don't know if you want me to read them. A lot of it's what I said.
So for the upcoming year, goal number three, this is a new goal for supporting programs and policies that maintain environmental.
It's not a new goal.
But it's an ongoing goal.
It's an ongoing goal, and instead of having a fourth goal or fifth goal about specifically social-emotional, we assumed it in this goal. It's a safe environment, substance-free, if it's tolerant, but then it should be a healthy social-emotional, safe place to be.
So the third thing here, it says implement a new wellness program. What?
So we have a new dynamic wellness in the program of studies, which I presented in January, the committee supported it. Significant changes in the program of studies for the wellness program, so adding classes like CrossFit, adding yoga, adding mindfulness, you know, so we're writing different classes for students to choose from.
Questions?
I have one more question.
Sure.
For the 12 students that you're piloting, the one-to-one, the technology, we have all the feedback for those, from them to take those recommendations or whatever it is to be implemented when the school is back.
Yes, they are juniors, still not leaving them, they're not leaving us this week, so we will try to do that.
Just, I think I'm full of compliments tonight, but this is, I think this plan's very succinct. I just, I think it's easy to read and very clear. So I just, I like the compliment of formatting of it.
Thank you.
Dr. Sullivan, did you want to present the field trip?
Music field trip?
Yes.
Annually, our music department travels to our workshops, and usually it's either New York or Disney World. And next year, they're proposing to go to Disney World, April 25th, April 28th, which includes two school days.
If I understand, it's a, you just said it's an every-year kind of thing where they go somewhere?
It's either, it's either New York and New York this year, and they're working trips. They perform, they have workshops, and I'm sure they have some of them too.
In your packet, you've got a complete list of the itinerary and what it means and the work that they're going to be doing.
Is it just band or the chorus?
The band chorus, in this case, some of the art students are going as well.
I guess the only question I have, and I'm open to just knowing it'll be adjusted, but there's like four teachers listed, 75 students listed, but then it has 12 to 1 ratio.
All parents go.
Okay, all right.
On this one, a lot of parents.
Okay.
The music parents support the trip every year, they support it, and certainly help pay for some of the students.
Chores need to be completed for that? The chorus needs to be completed for any parents? Is that a question? Okay, all right. I was just asking if any chorus had to be completed for any parents on there. Okay. So, because, we just, we just got this, so it's up to you guys. Do you want to make a motion to put this through tonight? Do you want to wait and table it till June? It's up to you guys.
I'm comfortable.
I am too.
Okay. All right. So I've been looking for a motion to approve the field trip for the music department to Walt Disney World in April of 2019.
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Next up, report of subcommittees. First one is Business and Finance Subcommittee. Let me just take this. Sure. I will take this. Mike and I, Mike Karosk and I, we're on the Business and Finance Subcommittee, so it's just me to finish up. As you may or may not know, last night, our presented budget, which should be in the packet, was approved at town meeting as it lays out here. That includes the free all-day kindergarten with the free cash funded, funded by free, free cash from the town. Got that right. On a personal note, thank you to all the parents that helped push that forward. I know your voices were heard. I appreciate it. And on a personal, that's all I have to say, but thank you to everybody in the town that approved the budget that we currently have. Peter, if you have anything to add on it?
Yeah. There's been a couple of goals that we've had as a, as a school system for quite a while. One was the creation of a better facility space, and another one was the creation of a full-day kindergarten program. As hopefully people know, or they wouldn't have supported this, the kindergarten of today is not the kindergarten of yesterday. It's, not that it didn't have value back in the day, but I just ask anyone who is interested to see the work that's done by our kindergarten teachers with the students, to see the high value of what's going on, and in terms of their moving along the continuum and being ready and learning and engaging in a way that's fun. It's an amazing process to watch. And we're very proud of what goes on in those classrooms, and proud that we're going to be able to offer an all-day kindergarten program in Abington. And so, it was a team effort, and the stars were in alignment, because not only is this something that people found good value in, good for kids, but the town had the availability of free cash that will be reimbursed in following years through the best estimates of Chapter 70, that will pay for it going forward. And so, that one-time infusion of free cash provided that assistance that we needed. And as Chris said, that was supported by our parents, it was supported by our faculty and staff, our administration, it was supported by the financial officers group at the town hall, the town leadership, the Board of Selectmen, the finance committee. And so, it was, it was a multiple-tiered effort, and it was successful, and it's going to be a wonderful program for our kids. So thank you, everybody.
The second item, evaluation of the superintendent of schools. So you guys have in your packet a timeline essentially of the evaluation process. Where we sit right now is in June. We're going to look at the June part of it for the mid-year review. Peter is going to get a summary to me of his self-completed review. I will get it to you guys as soon as possible after that, and then I'm going to ask that you're able to get it back to me with your comments, mid-year comments. I'll consolidate it, and at the next meeting, we'll present the final result. If you guys could try to get it back to me by the 12th of June, if it's a little bit after, it's fine, but our next meeting is the 19th, so I'll have to consolidate it before that, and I'll get it to you as soon as I get it, so.
Could I just?
Yeah, yes.
A couple of comments here. So anything that you get in this process that we've accomplished as a school district, I want to make it very clear. It was done by a, by a dedicated group of people that care deeply about kids and doing important and meaningful work for kids. There are things left to do, and I'm interested in being reflective about what's left to do, because although this group of people has accomplished a lot with us as a district, we owe it to our kids to be continually reflective and thinking about what's next and, and what we're currently doing to improve what we're doing. So I'll be interested in all of that feedback and those thoughts. And I'm also available during this time period. Should anybody have any questions about anything in it whatsoever to have further discussions, all you have to do is pick up the phone, call me, or email me, or put on Facebook. I'll respond.
All right. So, now we're on to the report of the superintendent of schools. You want to take the first one?
Sure. And so I'm proud to announce our Chester J. Millet Outstanding Teacher Award recipients for this year. It's a little, it's a sort of a diversion from what we've normally done. We've normally had one person. So this year, we have three as a group. Joyce Harrington, Charlie Blanchett, and Steve Shannon on the music department. And as our outstanding support person, we have this new award this year, which, you know, I wonder why we haven't done this sooner. I'm so glad we're doing it now. Janie Kelleher as the Administrative Assistant at Abington High School. As everybody at the high school, most importantly, Terry will tell you, she walks on water. And so this is symbolic of the work, I think, that, that many people do across the district. And these are this year's award winners. So when we come back to school, when we're all together, we'll, we'll celebrate them all as a group in that opening of school. And now we're making the announcements. We'll continue to congratulate them and hold them up on high and then, and then do sort of an official ceremony when we're all together at the opening next year. In terms of professional development, there've been a lot of good questions about professional development and feedback. And there's also a lot of questions about the Alice Program that we're, we're implementing. And then more information on the English Language Arts and Digital Literacy and Resources for English Language Arts and the STEAM program. And so Dr. Fedorowicz has those for us this evening.
So, thank you for being here and letting me share this information with you. And I just want to say welcome to the new school committee members. So I'm actually pretty excited to present to you tonight because we've got a lot of good updates and some highlights. And there's always a lot of great stuff going on in the district, but these are some of the biggies that I'm going to talk about today. The first one, we wanted to discuss, there was some questions about our PD surveys. So the main objective of PD feedback surveys is to get input, to make sure that the professional development is useful, it's meaningful, it helps guide us for future PD. Every spring, we send out a survey and it's, when I say we, it's a collaboration between myself and principals. We have our Curriculum Planning Council, which consists of teacher leaders, department heads, curriculum coordinators. And so we send these out to help guide our training. Now, there's always stuff coming down from the state. There's items that teachers want to have, there are items that principals want to have. So it's, it's meetings that we have to try and coordinate all that to get the best fit for the following year. So what we've done in the past and what I've done in previous districts is always sent out a feedback survey. And one of the requests I had when I first got here, almost six years ago now, was can we, you know, we wanted, the teachers wanted some feedback. They wanted to provide feedback in the survey. So, so of course we did that and what we found is that over time, we had to make some changes to our PD feedback survey and our forms. So going forward, we made some changes and we haven't regularly or consistently collected feedback anonymously. I always miss that word, anonymously, through the online version. And there's a few reasons why. So, one, we started getting limited responses. So teachers, it's really great to get the feedback at first and then as the year would go on, it would, it would kind of dwindle. So it wasn't very representative of the group. Second, we really started differentiating our feedback, our professional development. So our professional development could be building-based or grade-based or subject-based. And so our general PD form that we also have in our PD policy wasn't always applicable for everything. So if you take your science department at the high school might not have the same PD or PD format that we're going to use, say, at elementary level or, you know, within Laura Monachino's group. So we wanted to be sensitive to that. And also, we, like I said, we were getting less surveys and we want to be mindful of teachers' times as well. So we became a little bit creative in how we obtained feedback. So even though we didn't necessarily do the anonymous feedback online, we still wanted to have the best practice in providing, getting the feedback from the teachers. So in ways that we've become creative, we've done, obviously, we still do some of the online. We also do paper surveys. A lot of it is building-based. A lot of times, the principals will do it. We'll have a trainer come in, they use a survey. And sometimes we didn't want to duplicate our efforts in providing the same type of survey out. We also have open conversations at our curriculum planning time. And this is pretty beneficial too. I had one of the department heads say, well, we're really a small group. And to, you know, we're just going to sit around and talk about our PD and what we think and what we want to do and moving forward for the next time. So it's been a lot of open conversations. And just to give you an example, something this year with our wonders training, we had the trainers come in and we did surveys. The trainers would provide the feedback to us so that there wasn't a duplicate survey. But having conversations with teachers and teachers coming into my office and giving feedback as well, something that was really interesting is that through the course of the year, they said, well, we really still need some work on our digital piece for the wonders. And that, that didn't come through on an anonymous survey. It came more through conversations and conversations with principals. So hearing that, I was able to have conversations with vendors and even though our complimentary trainings were up, because I was trying to get some of those. And they said, you know what, we'll throw another one in because you weren't satisfied with that particular training. So, and that was through the conversations we had for that. So our overarching goal, the big picture, is to obtain the feedback so it helps to guide our future PD. We do discuss the feedback at our Curriculum Planning Council, which consists of department heads, teachers, teacher leaders, administrators. And our last meeting, what we talked about is actually doing, although we have a standard one in our policy, for our PD policy, I sent out a sample of, well, what if we did, you know, a standard set of questions and then the rest of them, we make it very specific for the rest. And that was just something I threw out and I sent that out to the team and so I'm still getting some feedback on that. And they like the idea, but they're also saying, well, we only have two or three people in our department or within here, so we usually just handle it. So I think it's, it warrants further conversation and taking a look at our policy as well, so we can navigate that.
I got a question though.
Yes.
My understanding is though that the goal is that there will be the availability of an anonymous, of an anonymous survey following PD though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just a comment, is this okay, Chris? I can appreciate what you're saying about the informal conversations. I just, I'd like to see us move towards a culture of feedback, like honest constructive feedback. And I think that anonymous element, as somebody who personally, I deliver the PD and then I hear the feedback, it's important that I use that to reflect, plan for next steps. And so I, I know that as comfortable as I am with people who I work with, they may love me personally, but not feel comfortable telling me that on that particular day, I was not my best self or that was not the best use of their time. And I, and it's almost better to hear that without anyone's name attached. And just to move forward in my own reflective practice, I'd love, I, I think those informal conversations will happen on their own, but I'd love to see us move towards the, like what Peter was just saying, a sort of a routine or a habit that we, we sort of always give this anonymous feedback because we are a culture of educators and professionals who reflect and make changes.
Yeah, and that's something that's very easy to do, that we can standardize and move forward with. It, you know, it's also something, we have a team of people that do the PD, so.
Just, how often does that curriculum planning committee meet?
We meet about once a month.
And does that group change from year to year?
It consists of our curriculum coordinators and they apply every year at this time of year. It consists of department heads, principals, and directors.
Probably 90% the same each year. Those people that are delivering in a, by grade or by department, PD and, and interact with other members at the grade or at the department level.
So when it says comprised of teachers, the teachers are the department heads and curriculum coordinators?
Coordinators. So the people understand in cable, out on cable, so these are people that pretty much teach all day and they receive a stipend for this additional responsibility. Directors have a reduced schedule, but at, at the elementary level, they don't. It's pretty much a stipend for that work. So they are teachers.
And there's good representation at the elementary level too, just by principals on this committee?
You mean by teachers or the principals?
Just, just maybe in general, who's representing the elementary on this committee? Principals, because they don't have, they, you would be the curriculum coordinator?
Yep. So we.
You have curriculum coordinators.
Yes.
So explain that part.
So we have principals, the principals from the elementary, but we also have teachers, teacher leaders who are the curriculum coordinators. We have one for each subject area and for ELA and math, we have two. So we have a lower elementary and an upper elementary curriculum coordinators for math and ELA. And then we've got science and social studies coordinators as well.
Great, so there, that, those are the teacher reps too?
Yes.
Great.
Yep, and there's representation from Beaverbrook, Woodsdale, and grades five and six. So that we do have that upper and lower elementary perspective.
Thank you.
Dr. Fedorowicz, just, just, I'm just going to kind of second something that came up earlier. Mine's more from a business point of view, from my job, but I do know that if you don't provide, like if there's not the anonymity, I can't say the word either, there is hesitance in giving truthful stuff out. So I do, I do support that, like moving forward, having that anonymous type of survey available going forward.
That is the plan.
Okay, great.
That's the plan.
And just maybe building in the time, you said the turnout's been, you know, minimal responses. Just allowing, if we want the responses, we have to honor the time that we give teachers to, to fill it out. And sometimes that means cutting back the PD by 10 minutes to say that this work is so important, this reflection piece and feedback piece is so important that we are going to honor the work by stopping 10 minutes and having you complete it here, so that when.
Yeah, we can make that a priority at the end of professional development as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, so I'm really excited to talk about the new curriculum enforcers that we have, that we put into place this year. This took a lot of work and it includes our new digital literacy. We have the new standards come out, we have computer science and STEAM. STEAM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math. And so our digital literacy and computer science occur in grades one through eight, so our digital literacy, one through six, computer science, seven and eight. And then we have electus at the high school. The curriculum was written by the digital literacy and computer science committees, which consisted of myself, Meg Doherty as the department chair, and our teachers. So we wrote this to be implemented for this year. And right now, currently, our grades one through six, students meet weekly and they have this course. Grades seven and eight meet 30 days for two trimesters, so it's three days on, three days off. And then this vertical sequence acts as feeder courses for the high school. At the high school, the students are exposed to advanced computer programming, web design, and AP computer science. And so some of the great projects they do in some of these courses, they're very hands-on, teaches a lot about digital literacy. In grades one through four, we do a lot of the basic digital literacy. So what are the components of the computer, the keyboard, and especially preparation for the new online next-gen MCAS test? Just being able to navigate a lot of what's on the computer. Our ELA and math programs we have at the elementary are very conducive to helping out with learning how to write online, solve problems online. And so we've really integrated that as well. Grades five through eight in the digital literacy have been doing a lot of great stuff. For example, the FBI has, they created a website called SOS, which is Safe Online Surfing. And they use real cases to investigate and navigate other student issues that they have had online. And so our students will go through, navigate these different scenarios and then take a test just for the safety piece. And I'm happy to say that our middle school ranked number nine in the nation in this past fall, in September, out of 1,600, 100 schools. So it is really pretty neat. We also do things like Scratch Day, which is MIT's coding program. And students use a combination of different codes and coding to produce projects online. In addition, we do word processing, Excel, spreadsheets for financial literacy and things like that. Our computer science courses in seven and eight, they learn how to make websites, do more coding and programming. Our STEAM classes for grades five through eight, that's new this year, which is really great because it's a big piece of our math and science standards and then of course, our art is the engineering piece. And again, we pulled together a committee, Diane Silvetti, Mike Dorado, myself, and science teachers from the middle school, high school, and elementary. We all worked to write the standards at this time last year so that we can implement the course this year. And there's a lot of hands-on, student-centered problem-solving that really, really complement our other courses. So Biosphere, Simple Machines, Building Hot Wheels Parking Garages, Robotics Programming. We won the Curriculum Leadership Council grant from Bridgewater State. We were able to get some robotics through that grant and we're going to be presenting that next year. So that's very exciting courses that we have.
Can I just make a quick comment about something that occurred today? So this is not going to sound that miraculous to people, but it actually is. I was in a third-grade classroom today and the third-grade teacher had the students take their laptops out of a cart and all log on, individual log-ons. And they were researching the endangered species that each child wanted to research. That, what I just described, took place in about three minutes' time, from going from sitting on a piece of carpet to getting the computers, logging on as individuals. Maybe I'm exaggerating, it was four minutes. And researching their own endangered species that they were interested in, in, in looking at. So months ago, a year ago, that never would have happened. Not only did we not have the infrastructure, but the level of sophistication of a third-grader to access an online portal with their own individual log-on, they didn't have it. And so as our students move through the system and they come to our high school, being able to leave with experiences that are so much more sophisticated than anything we've ever done before. As individuals, they're able to do things that are of high interest to them. They get to pick whether it's a polar bear or an eagle or whatever animal they want. So it's, so it's a very personal experience, it's more interesting to the students. And at the same time, they're able to collaborate using a computer and build those skills simultaneously because they're in an online format, communicating with, and interacting with the software and other people online. So in a way that's safe. So that's our teachers, that's Sherry, that's our principals. And that's what unpacking, when, when we say unpacking the literacy standards, that's an example of what we're doing and that's why it's important. And it's also important to do it not only as students move through the system from grade by grade by grade, but yeah, actually when they get into subject specifics. Because the technology use for a science classroom and manipulating those things for a lab are different than what's going to take place in a social studies classroom where they're using, they're not using fake news to, to create projects for social studies using primary legitimate sources that, that build a case for something that they're, that they're arguing. So I know I took a long time explaining that, but we do so much work in professional development with technology and I would imagine people are tired of hearing about it, but there's so much more to do and that's why. And we are making progress with it.
And the PTO, just to mention technology, I think they've been huge supporters. I've sat at Beaverbrook PTO meetings the last three to four years and then Woodsdale, where we have heard them talk about not. And then Woodsdale, where we have heard them talk about not having, if they could only have a few more iPads, how are we gonna solve this problem? They've raised, they've put their minds and worked, rolled up their sleeves and have really helped bring in a lot of money for the technology that we're using.
So for those years where we had so little and we had to retrofit, our PTOs and our parent groups have, we've done it on their, on their backs. And so getting into this next phase with those groups is also exciting. Thanks for letting me to that segue.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's a big piece of our curriculum now and I think it's so important and the kids love it. All right, the next piece is the Wonders ELA update. We spent so much time over the past, well, last year, looking at the piloting and going through the process and then choosing. And I just wanted to provide an update because I really wanna commend the teachers and the principals, our teacher leaders, because with everything going on with the new rollout, new building, new rooms, the technology, trying to navigate the new MCAS test. I think it's been a lot and there's been such a shift over the course of the year from starting this, fully this year until this point. It has been a paradigm shift going from a basal to a balanced literacy and incorporating independent reading. You know, we, we even, there were some issues with the rollout, not on our end, but we ended up with some of the wrong books and the company was fantastic. And, you know, the teachers were great in navigating that and helping each other out. And so it's just a really wonderful process to see. The way we started this is, actually, I am including this time last year because we really kicked it off this time last year with professional development. We, we got the teacher manuals, the student manuals, the digital components in the teachers' hands before summer so that they could start looking at it, start planning. ELA is big, there's a lot to it, it's a lot in teaching kids how to read. And so we provided training, end of May last year, in centers, in Daily Five, some workshop. And we had the trainers from Wonders come in and train everybody, every single teacher, to get them jump-started for the summer. They then came back, end of September, we provided additional training. And then at our end of October professional development days, we spent time and curriculum planning time with teachers, our professional development time. We ended up getting subs to help pull together. The reading specialists have been wonderful and pulling some teachers together to pull the scope and sequence to get people started because it really is, I can't emphasize enough what the shift is from going from a basal to a more student-centered approach. So one correction on here, it's teacher-centered, I'm sorry, teacher-centered to a student-centered approach. I don't know if you got the old version, but just a correction there. So going forward for next year, with everything that has happened this year and all the changes and implementing this, like I said, they did a wonderful job, but I think we still need some more work. It's not something that happens within a year and I think it happens over the course of a few years. So we're working on planning right now and like with our PD survey, teachers have put in, yes, we want some more work with this. Next, later this week, I'm working with reading specialists to start looking at planning for next year for our scope and sequence and planning out the units. We're gonna be doing some curriculum writing and providing more supports for next year for our teachers. And like I said, we're gonna be getting that advanced digital training component so teachers, they know the basics now, they'll get more involved with the ELA, or with the digital component of that. Any questions? I know you're smiling, yes.
I'm at my quota. Do the reading specialists, you've had a lot of training it sounds like with them, do they ever have opportunities to either model or go back and lead some PD work? Or is that something that has happened or was planning on happening?
We have definitely done that this year. So it's been, especially at our Woodsdale and Beaverbrook, we've done it at grade five. But it has been, it has been the modeling and it's been sitting down and saying, okay, what do the teachers need? What does this, where are the confusion points in helping them to navigate the different aspects? So they have gone in and modeled. Something we tried to put in place this year that we did last year is visit other districts. We weren't able to visit one of the districts that is, that we usually visit or wanna visit now that we, we have this in place. So that's something else that we do. Because I think it's really important to see what other people are doing.
And just that culture of we're all new at this, so when people are willing to step up and experiment and showcase it as a learner themselves, I think it helps to build buy-in for everyone else who might still be silently struggling with the shift that you described. It is a huge one, so a lot of work.
And we've been doing learning walks as well. So there have been key opportunities for teachers to see this as well. And actually, we're hosting other districts to come in and see some of our models and some of our inclusion classes, so.
Thanks.
Yes. And something else to answer that question that Sherry instituted. So we had a free workshop for PTO literacy and one of their components is about coaching others. So we're also trying to shape some of the reading specialists to be beyond direct construction with students. So we started something called concern-based coaching. So a staff person could go, it could be a parent or a teacher, could go to a reading specialist and say, I have a concern. I would like to know how to level my goals. I would like to know how to do this. And they could go one-on-one with a reading specialist and they built in some consultation time. It's a Beaverbrook school, so that for people who were veteran teachers. So it's hard when you're a teacher who's been here 10-plus years to say, I don't know how to do something because it's a different something. So that's something we did because Sherry was able to find us the support to do that and help us navigate that, so that was new to us as well.
That makes me think for any PTO education weekly, their most recent article or edition talked about how coaching, instructional coaching is no longer something we should ask if we're doing it, but it, we have to find a way. Like it's no longer talked about about whether it's important, but that it's been determined that it is important. So, and I think that recognizes the shifts in curriculum that we're all facing. So the coach becomes a critical player. It's exciting to see that that works beginning.
Okay, and then the last piece has to do with our safety professional development. So Abington Public Schools partnered with Abington Police Department to implement and roll out the Alice training, our Alice safety training. And what this basically is, is looking at safety and different options for survival should we have an armed intruder. What we've done so far is that we have been trained as administrators to help roll this out in our district. We are certified Alice trainers. And so we started the rollout with the staff, all staff, teachers, paras, custodians, administrative assistants, everybody's involved. And that started May 10th, either during the professional development time with a brief introductory from Mr. Schaefer on what it entails or at a staff meeting. And then on May 11th, we had our professional development day for half a day. And this is where our teachers spent the first hour individually doing an online e-learning component. So they had the introduction to Alice and they could see what it was about. This was then followed in the second hour by a faculty presentation by elementary school and then by middle, high school. And the principals, Rich did a fantastic job in rolling this out by building. So a lot of preparation took place behind the scenes to provide this presentation and start to field some of the questions, because there are a lot of questions by building. And we also have, you know, kids and teachers at different grade levels are going to respond differently. You don't know about any previous trauma or whatnot. So it is a very sensitive subject and everybody, the, the principals did a great job rolling that out. On June 11th, we're gonna be doing our scenario drills with the staff by building. So this is again, all of our staff and we're gonna go through different scenarios. So we've done the e-learning, we've done the presentation. Now we're actually gonna practice within the rooms, within the buildings for different cases that could come about. A parent letter is gonna be going out shortly just to inform the parents of our next steps after staff have been trained. And that includes our June 13th parent informational night. And I really wanna make sure that gets out there. It's at 6:00 PM in the middle, high school, high school, I'm sorry, middle school, high school auditorium. And we're gonna do a presentation there. Actually, Mr. Schaefer is gonna do the presentation and we'll be there to answer any questions or any concerns. We're also gonna talk about briefly how it's gonna roll out for our students on June 15th. And students will receive an introductory lesson for this year. Elementary, again, is gonna be very age-appropriate. Middle school, high school, it's all very age-appropriate, different trainings. But the same, same message. We're gonna talk about the different options. And moving forward, the plan is to, we're gonna have the introductory this year and then we're gonna review it again at the beginning of next year and start doing our practices and drills once the kids are moved into their new classrooms, they have their new teachers, they might be moving into different buildings. So we're pretty excited about that. It's an important piece to roll out.
I have two quick questions. On, for June 11th, the scenario drills, are those gonna be similar to what you guys went through on April vacation when you did yours?
Yes, identical.
Okay.
And we're working with Abington Police Department. They are present at all trainings and will be present at all trainings. And they are going to be rolling this out with us as well. We have options for people who wanna be observers versus actually taking place. We want everybody to be comfortable.
Okay, perfect. The second question is kinda combining the next, the next two days, the 13th and the 15th. You mentioned as it's rolled out by building, I mean, we have first graders and we have 12th graders, 11th graders, I guess, by June 15th. Will the different plans be available for parents to see two nights earlier at the June 13th? Well, for instance, I have a child in Beaverbrook. Will, I know what is gonna be kinda presented to my child and will somebody who has an eighth grader know what's gonna present to their child at that time?
We're gonna, we're gonna lay out some examples of what that's gonna be like for the students. So as we plan this with the students, remember we have the entire spectrum of needs with our, with our students. And so to be able to introduce this to them, to take this first cut at it, they've not processed this information before. So we wanna be very careful and thoughtful about the age of our students as, as we roll this out. I mean, how much is a first, as a first grader going to be able to absorb of this? It's done through a, it's done through a storybook that was written by Alice. So we're gonna follow that script so that that's age-appropriate. And then at the high school level, you know, all the way through the continuum, you've got, you've got older kids who we can give all of the information to and make it more of a, of a tabletop exercise for them. To introduce to teenagers how to barricade a door in the last couple of days of school and then, you know, leave the building is probably not the right thing to do for our first crack with our high school kids. But that doesn't mean that they can't have all of the information. And please know that every single staff member in the Abington Public Schools has been fully trained, means that every single staff member in the schools have been trained. Custodians, cafeteria, teachers, paraprofessionals. And so they will go through the more involved barricading scenarios. And so that's, that's how we plan on approaching this.
Catherine, you want?
Ms. Could you briefly for a minute just talk about how we have special education meetings? And we have some parents who are concerned about students who have mobility or cognitive issues that this is part of the IEP process?
Sure.
Would you like them to?
Well, what would you like me to talk about? But we have-
Some people worry about that, are we planned ahead? So that the child who has difficulties moving or is very frightened by loud noises, that we are in process of planning, that we talk about these things as they come up, that it's not forgotten.
It's part of the process.
Right.
It's part of the IEP process. And then also, parents can always ask for any type of meetings at any time regarding, it's not just for IEP students, but we have 504 students. And we also have general ed kids that have high anxiety but don't warrant, you know, a specialized service. So that's always something that we always have in place for parents and families at any time.
So if I could just build on that, part of this is that they call it the 10-80-10 rule. 10% of the people are going to react and follow their training and be assistive in, in helping people and saving lives. 80% are, are going to be sort of following the masses in, in how people react. And then 10% are gonna react poorly and freeze and panic and perhaps make the situation worse. And so when we're doing this training, we have to be prepared for anyone not being able to be capable of functioning in this most stressful event that they're ever gonna experience in their lives, sadly. And so the questions that we've asked emergency responders about these as we went through our trainings is that when you've got people that are incapacitated for whatever reason, people grab them and usher them out, take care of them, get them through doorways, get them to safety, sort of as a, as a natural reaction in some of, in some, in some people in these cases. They talk about kids with, or people with a broken leg on crutches who are moving just fine, don't need any help. And all of a sudden, three people are grabbing them and carrying them out to take care of them. And so that, that's a part of the discussions we've had because a lot of, a lot of this includes those types of scenarios. And then building on what-ifs, because that's one of the, the benefits of this is that there's a lot of processing time for people built in by design for Q and A and processing all of the information that people are given. So in these last two half-days that the school committee provided for us, the first one and the one that's coming up, people sit in groups and they say, okay, what did we learn? And then what if? And then what if, because as you reflect on this stuff, that's, that's the way to be best prepared to actually run through those what-if scenarios so that, God forbid, we're in that worst environment that you've ever, could happen. You're not thinking through it for the first time. And that's also part of why we would wanna do this introductory piece with the students so that, God forbid, they would be able to draw from. This isn't the first time that they've all thought about this process. It's been, it's been something that's, we've already talked about this, this school year. I wish there was an argument to not do this as soon as possible, but unfortunately, that's not the world we're living in. The, the argument is far more compelling to, to begin this process. And an important key to this is that it's a universal set of options for people. I wanna continue to say this to our groups of, of parents or, or the community. The majority of these attacks don't take place in schools, they take place in businesses. You know, that is, that is a fact. And so it's, it certainly takes place in schools. So the training is meant though for people in a school, in a mall, in a movie theater, in, in wherever these types of things may take place. And that's another reason that schools are doing this in America because you never know where something like this could take place. I hope I didn't say some of the things you were gonna say.
No, that's perfect. And we'll talk more about this on Parent Night and you'll hear more about it in Parent Lounge.
Okay, great. Any other questions? I think we'll say, thanks. Go ahead, Wendy, I'm sorry.
I, I just actually wanna go back to the new curriculum courses.
Yes.
Can we get a list? Because nothing's written down of what, you know, the, the elementary kids are doing for their new courses and how, you know what I mean, like?
Like a list of projects?
Yeah, a list, well, a list of the classes of exactly kinda what they're, like what grades are doing. I can't even read some of what-
Like digital literacy, computer science.
Yeah. Right, because you, I just go kinda fast, so I didn't get a chance to write it all down. No, that's fine. So I just wanted to just get a list. And then maybe a little more in-depth, um, knowledge of the, how we were, became to be the number nine middle school. And when you say middle, is that like six through eight, five through eight or, okay? I don't know, because I, I just haven't seen that out there. It's kind of exciting or important, right?
It's very exciting. It's very exciting. That's, that's my understanding.
Awesome. Maybe for more kids to know too, you know what I mean? Like if it's in a bulletin or, I don't know.
Absolutely.
All right, awesome.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Dorwitz. Next, go ahead.
So the next piece is, is for me, and it's a proposed revision to next year's school calendar. So can I, I'd like to frame this the following way. This is born out of discussion with the teachers around the negotiations that we've been having. But I, but I want, what I want to say about this is that if this is something that I didn't support or want to recommend that was a good thing for kids, we wouldn't be bringing it here. And so this, I wanted to give the teachers credit for where it came from, and I'll take the blame if it doesn't work. So.
Me too.
So what the proposal is that I have for you is to pilot for next year, and I know this is hard to do because it's, it's later in the school year, we've already announced next year's calendar. So it's sort of with a, with a, some bravery, I'm going to ask you to consider this. What we would do for next year is we would move the Professional Development Day that has been around about Halloween that we've traditionally had to the front of the year, to the beginning of the year. So, so teachers would come on August 27th, which would be, which would be the traditional teacher day that we have had to prepare for the opening. And on the 28th, we would make that the full day professional development for staff. Teachers with all of the talk that I'm, that I don't want people to get too tired of around the implementation of, of technology and using that in a highly effective way. Teachers at the secondary level would be working with Edgescape and, which is the Microsoft piece in terms of the Microsoft tools that are available. And then they'd be working on Canvas, which is the learning management system that we'll be using with the one-to-one initiative. They would be doing this work before the students come, which would be, which would be beneficial to them. To, to, to think for a second that we are going to dive deeply enough into this in one day would be wrong. It's going to take years for us to develop the higher levels of sophistication that we're looking for with the delivery using these models and these tools. However, having said that, before we're about to pass out computers and laptops to every student at, at the secondary level, this day would be highly valuable. And then at the elementary level, some of the things that Sherry had talked about, weave directly into this with the reading and math program and the, and the digital support for reading and math and the resources that teachers are using with those, those products. So with these, with these new areas for us, these new tools for us, it's really, it really maximizes that investment in those tools because we're, we're more fully using them across the district with technology. Surveys would also be done to determine how to best use this time within these areas with our faculty. And so it's, that August 28th, in what you have in your packet, would be that, would be that full day. We wouldn't have students report. So that's a change. Students would report on August 29th, which is, which is Wednesday, and those would be grades one through 12. Would be, that would be their first day. August 30th would be another day for, of school for grades one through 12. August 31st, which is Friday, would be no school. On September 4th, pre-kindergarten and kindergarten would start. Those earlier days in that previous week would be used for transition activities. Those could be screenings, those could be orientations, those could be transitional meetings for students. And then on November 6th, we would have a half-day for staff, and we would have no students in the district that day. The reason we want to do that is because this also moves, at the end of the school year, we have a last day for students. The next day is a half-day for teachers and who, who teachers do work in terms of closeout inventory and closing out the year. So we'd move that day to the November 6th day. The reason we picked November 6th is because that's an election day, and at this building, we're going to have a major election here. And, and we're just not able to safely have that election and have the school in operation that day for the town. So that would be a half-day for teachers only on November 6th. And so that pretty much summarizes those moves. What am I missing? Wendy, Felicia, Dimpna, you've been in all those meetings. Oh, sorry, thank you. Good point. This is a pilot for, for next year, and the school committee would have the option to continue it into year two if it works. Committee could continue it forevermore. And so after the opening, if this turns out to be a dismal failure, I'd go back to the association, we'd talk about where the breakdowns were, and we could, we could decide not to do it again in the second year. Then, or if it, if it worked, we'd be able to think about doing it in year two and then seeing how the closeout goes and determine, at that point, it'd be too late if we decide to do it. But we'd want to do a good and a lot of thinking about how the closeout worked before we decided how many more years in advance we'd want to do this. I think it's important that the committee reserves the authority and the autonomy to set the dates. And so the, I want, you know, the teachers were willing to consider this a pilot for the first year to see how it goes. And it was born out of wanting to be best prepared to receive kids in, in a year where we have a lot of changes. So. Anything else I forgot?
Usually, the calendar is based on parental feedback. So we also want to take that into account throughout this pilot as well.
Yep.
So for next year, all of you on the committee and then all of, you know, the community members, you know, give some feedback because that is something that we take into account every year when we do work on the calendar. And this will be something different for Abington next year, so it'll be important to get their feedback as well. And to look at attendance, most importantly, because we may have a lot of people that extend their vacations or things of that sort, so we want to take that into account.
One of the things that makes this easier is you're delaying the reporting of students coming to school. You're not moving it up earlier so people have to end their vacations. So if people have already made plans, they're not going to have to come home early to accommodate an earlier day. They're actually going to get an additional day.
Right.
I want to ask one question, and I didn't want to grab my phone to check. Is April 19th, is April 19th Good Friday? Does anybody know? I just don't want to put something out there that is not...
But it's during the break.
That was my question. I want to make sure, no, a date wasn't missing that we voted on. So that was all. Thank you. Thank you for filling us in. Does anybody have any, any questions? So with that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the revisions to the school calendar for 2018-19 as was presented in the package.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sorry.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You'll say it.
You say it.
I second it, yep.
So we will blitz people with this information.
That was my follow-up. Can we send this out as soon as possible and update the website with this calendar? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, reporter, Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you. So this evening, I just wanted to update you on our pre-K to 8 summer academic program that will begin for extended school year programming on July 9th through August 2nd. We do this every year. And that'll be from 8:30 to 12:15, Monday through Thursday. And most of our children will be there working on their IP goals to prevent regression, and that will be held from, again, 8:30 to 12:15. And then we have a certain number of students that also need additional time. And so they will be doing an extended program with an additional two hours that'll go to 2:15. And those children will have specific focus areas regarding our behavior consultant working with them on looking at social, emotional, and functional, and adaptive living, community, readiness skills, et cetera. So the majority or all of it is for the prevention of regression. And then most of our children will be there from 8:30 to 12:15, and then we have a few of our youngsters that will be staying longer. It's a great program. We have a fabulous teacher-student ratio, and it's well-received by families every year. So please talk it up in the community because we offer it to our students, we just really want them to access it. And even if they have a vacation that falls, you know, right in the middle, it's okay. You know, still have your kids come because it really is about preventing regression.
I'm glad the dates were able to stay.
Yeah.
As they were last year too. So the new, building new school forces to adjust and made it better, in my opinion anyway, so.
Yeah, so it's exciting. And we have Sarah McGinnis, as all of you know, she's our director, she's been our director now for quite a few years. And then we have Amy Alice, who this year is our new behavior consultant, so she'll be working closely also with Sarah McGinnis. So it'll be a well-run program. The next piece is our Coordinated Program Review update. I wanted to share with you the results. This is still in draft form, however, I did speak with the DESE. It's very comprehensive, it's 71 pages, it's really heavy. I do want to commend our staff because they really did an exceptional job. Of the areas that I would like to just touch upon, as much as there are more areas that everyone did fabulous on, there are six areas that I do want to talk about because I do think this is what's going to drive us in the future and for the next three to six years in terms of some areas that may need to be looked at in terms of special education, civil rights, and English language learners. Our Title I, which I already reported on, was perfect. So there's no areas that we would have to look at at this time. And so, but in moving forward in terms of, if you look on page 30, there was one area under the section of SE 39, which is procedures used to provide service to eligible students enrolled in private schools at private expense. And so we do have an obligation in special education to make sure that we are meeting routinely and having meaningful conversations with schools. We do that with St. Bridgetts. We have a wonderful relationship with Matt Collins, who's the principal over there, the teachers, you know, they were just here with us and will be continuing with our professional development. But we don't have it documented dates that happen a certain number of times. It really is based on St. Bridgetts enrollment changes, you know, throughout every year, but then also depends upon the needs of the children. You know, some years, they don't have many students that are accessing 504 plans or IP plans, and then some years, they do. So what will be easiest to do is that we may just set up dates that, you know, at the beginning, the middle, and the end, and the team chairs will lead those conversations as well as guidance departments. Okay? So that's an easy one for us to do, but because we're so small in Abington, we just pick up the phone and talk to Matt Collins. Or we pick up the phone and we say, okay, well, why don't you have the teachers come over and take a look, or this is what we can do in terms of providing services.
For, for example, they were all here for the Alice training.
Correct.
We invited them over for the Alice training because, yeah, even though I didn't know when Good Friday was, in April, I, we wanted to make sure we invited them.
So moving right along. SE 56, we have the Program Plan Evaluation for Special Education. The state really has a movement now of having more external reviews. We do a lot of internal reviews. We've had consultants come in, we've, we've been growing our programs significantly throughout the years. But what they did right is that one area to consider is to also do an external program review. And so that is something for us to consider. There are wonderful consultants out there, there's also Teachers 21, there's collaboratives, there's private sectors that can come in and take a look at, you know, what are some areas that you might want to consider honing in on? And we have done that with collaboratives, especially our local collaboratives such as North River Collaborative and Reed's we're a part of. And so they have come in, especially when we're creating new programs to keep our children within Abington. So that is something that we'll do specifically for the Coordinated Program Review, and I think it's good feedback, you know, because it's always good to have an external person come in and take a look at, like, what's working, what's not working, get some feedback from your staff, get some feedback from families, et cetera. I also do want to thank our families. We had, we were really complimented by our auditor because we had so many parents reach out to her that were very supportive of special ed. So to all of you that took the time to do that, I just want to say thank you again. We really do appreciate that. The next piece is under the Civil Rights component. And again, this is a pretty comprehensive document. This will be going, once it's finalized by the state, it will be going on website, and it will be going on our website as well, and then you can also get that from, right from the DESE. If you turn to page 51, the, the Civil Rights on Student Discipline, this is also interesting because, again, the recommendation is a review of documents indicated that the district does not define a school-wide education service plan that describes the possible methods of delivering educational opportunities to those students who are suspended from school for more than 10 consecutive days. Every situation is so different. If a child's suspended from school and they continue to be suspended from school and it comes to 10 consecutive days, we've tried a, a variety of certain strategies, tools, and the state would like us to have a menu, a written documented menu of what are some of the things that might be something that we offer, such as, you know, we automatically offer, you know, home tutoring, we automatically offer in-school assistance, we automatically, you know, work with the parents and we send our consultants, such as our behavior consultants, out into the families to figure out the dynamics of what the problem is. We have the court systems that are involved, we have outside agencies that are involved that we collaborate with. I collaborate extensively with, on the medical field, you know, because usually, it's not just a child situation, it's also the family dynamic situation. So we have all of that in place, but they would like to see more of a menu of ideas that the district does. So we're going to put that in a format, and then that way, depending upon the circumstance, you know, we may pull from that, but also depending upon the circumstance, we may be adding to it because there's always other situations that arise for why students may be, you know, suspended and disciplined and out of the school setting. And on Civil Rights 25, the Institutional Self-Evaluation, again, this is something, this is page 60 for people, just looking at, looking at more evaluation. So they're not only talking about looking at your special education, having that externally evaluated by outside consultants, but they're also saying, okay, have someone come in and look at your curriculum. And I really like this because now the state is, you know, really highlighting this, I think it is so good to have, you know, someone with a new lens to come into your district and give you some feedback on, you know, what, what are some other things that you could be doing as a district? So that's something that will be taking place over the coming years. And then under our English Language Learner Programming, if you look at page 69, we do have, we always encourage all our staff to be SEI endorsed. That's between them and the state, and so we have many that are, are already endorsed, and we have some that are not. So when the auditor was meeting with people, it really is based on their certification, so they have time limits and timeframes to have that all done. So in our case, we have many of our administrators, if not all, and then many of our staff that are already SEI endorsed, but then there are a couple or a few that are still working on that. And really, it's in alignment with when their certification because now it's a requirement. So that'll be something that's ongoing. And then the last one, on the last, very last page of 71, is also another program evaluation for ELL programming. So you're hearing a common theme from the state to look at special ed, to look at civil rights, and to also look at your English Language Learner Programming. In particular, this one, I think, will be quite meaningful because our numbers for English Language Learners have truly grown. We are now a very small district, but we have now over 100 students that are in the ELL programming, which changes the regulations. And so we have a very active department now. We also have a very active parent group, and I know Peter will be sharing that, again, this year we'll be doing the ESL Parent Night where kids actually will be showing everything they've learned and things of that sort. But, but that's also a really good theme, I feel, that the state is coming and saying, you know what, we know all districts are doing a great job of internally looking at themselves, but now you really should also have an external viewpoint as well. So I do want to thank everybody. It's, it's over a year and a half, it's so intensive, it's so much work, but in the end, when we have it all done, it's so nice to validate that what we have been doing is working and working well. And the feedback that they gave us, I think, is something that is going to continue to move Abington to keep them at high levels of achievement. So thanks to everybody for your support. And then the last piece is really easy because professional development, everybody spoke about it tonight. So we've had all the principals talk about it, the school improvement plans, we've had Sherry talk about it. And so, again, we've been doing the Alice trainings, which has gotten a lot of nice feedback. We have class placement conversations that always take precedence at this time of the year as we're preparing for the next school year, and a lot of time goes in, especially And a lot of time goes in, especially at the elementary level, to talk about students and student needs and trying to match them with the proper staff so the personalities match as well. And so collecting feedback. And then you already heard that NAEYC was here today for our preschool programming. So that's exciting. They'll also be back tomorrow. So we're excited that we're coming to the end of our audits. And then in October, NEASC will be here. So hopefully, Abington will be able to take a breather for a year, maybe two, before we have more audits coming our way. So those are basically the overviews of what's going on. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Next, report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you. My fir-, all of a sudden, very easy, so excuse me. My first report is on the, on the building and where we're at. And as you drive in, you can see that we're having a lot of field work done and fencing is being put in. We had site signage added since the last meeting. So the outside is, is coming together. Inside, we, you'll see that we have, we spoke about last month some issues with the flooring in the main areas of the building. And those are being evaluated this week, actually, by the manufacturer. And we have a remediation plan to, to make some repairs over the summer. Additionally, over the summer, we plan to, I think we spoke about this last month as well, during the design process for the building, we had to eliminate some things. It's called value engineering out to get you to your price. And because you don't want your bids to come on, come in over what you have estimated the project to be. One of the items that was value engineered out is walk, is a more dirt-finger-resistant wall covering. So on the main hallways, from the caf-, middle school cafeteria area down to the, down to the gym and on the high school side, from the high school cafeteria down to the gym auditorium, those walls that we have a ton of traffic, students, and it's nothing malicious. It's just the number of students that are going up and down those hallways has caused some discoloration on the walls, markings. And so part of, part of the remediation for that is this summer, a wall paneling system will be put in place, which will be really helpful for that. And we're, we're excited about that. And like I said, it was in there originally and then it was taken out and now we have the ability to put it back in. So closeout is, it takes a long time. But I will tell you, and it was reported at the last building committee meeting, we just went through our ten-month commissioning with the independent commissioning agent assigned by the Mass Building Authority. And his reports just talked about really how good our mechanical systems are and, and how the different contractors have worked together for, for whatever small issues that there, there have been. I will say at this time of year, just like in your house, one day you have your air conditioning on, the next day you have your heat, the next day you have your windows open. The spring and the fall are difficult times to, Monday morning especially, either the buildings are warm or cool. And part of that is, although there's all kinds of temperature controls, over the weekend, they do go into more of a, I won't say sleep mode, but not as active mode. So it's, and it is, just like in your house, it's especially difficult when one day you have boilers on and the next day you have the air conditioning. So we're still, we're working on the balancing of that. Next thing I want to talk about, and it kind of ties in a little bit to, to Alice, that is our School Operations Plan. And we have, we're in the process of developing a new School Operations Plan. There's been a committee that's been meeting. We've had a number of meetings this spring. There's twelve committee members. It includes a member from the Avenue Police Department, Fire Department, administrators, athletic director, technology. And we are modeling our plan after NEMLEX Plan, which is New England, no, Northeast Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. And they, through a grant with the federal government, put together a model, a plan. But you can't just take the model and use it as your own. So we took the model and the twelve members of the committee have, went back out, looked at it, made changes to it, adaptations for what would work in Abington. And right now, it's in, it's in the review phase. And it does go hand in hand with Alice and enhanced lockdown. This, this plan addresses everything from earthquakes to floods to student support to active shooter. And its responses for how administrators should react, how office staff, teacher, and, and then there's a whole piece about reunification sites. If you have to evacuate your school, where you're going to meet, how you're going to get there. We've been in contact with the bus company, with our transportation providers, which are things we had done with our old plan as well. But this will be, what we, I, we anticipate is that I'll provide this to you in the next week or so. It's now out for review with Police Department, Fire Department, and our administrators. And I'll provide this to you in the next week or two so that hopefully at the June meeting, we'll be able to, to approve it and have, and answer any of your questions on it.
Okay, great. Thanks for your show. So next, new business establishment, next school committee meeting, Tuesday, June nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven PM here in the library. Informational items.
Can I just highlight, I'd like to just review the dates and highlight a couple of things. So in here, we've got a correspondence regarding Ryan Tobin and Faith Ryan, our eighth graders, who were selected as our student scholar leaders at the middle school level. It's, it's a great award. They, they get a dinner with their parents. They go out with Matt McCurtin and Eric Connelly. And they, it's a middle school award.
I happen to know both of those students personally and they're...
Say a few words.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tanner Carrington. I'm a student here at Abington High School. First, I want to talk about the Alice program. If you look around all the doors around this library, you'll see glass. And especially around the classrooms, you'll see glass. I'm not sure what, whose idea it would be to put glass around a high school. Especially on classrooms and outside of classrooms, there are tons of glass. So I don't think barricading will do anything to protect me and my fellow students. I think that's a really big problem. Another thing I'd talk about is the lunches. The lunches aren't as appetizing as they were last year. Today, we had taco, we had tacos, it was Taco Tuesday. And the only meat that was on, the size of the meat that was on the, on the taco was probably the size of like a pink eraser. And the rest was just covered with lettuce and salsa and corn and cheese. Doesn't, doesn't really sound appetizing to a lot of students. A lot of students were complaining about that. And it's kind of a big, a big problem as well because students wanted to be full and be energized and actually learn instead of being drowsy and feeling kind of sick because of this appetite of, or this selection of food that this school has given us. Another thing that, that's kind of personal to me, I wore a Make America Great Again hat and I was treated very poorly by other students. I was punched, kicked, shoved. I was being called racist, sexist. Someone put me on their Snapchat story. If you know what a Snapchat story is, it's basically a twenty-four-hour period where a picture or a video is posted on that person's account and anybody can see it. Someone called me a racist on there. I wasn't really happy about that. And the last thing I wanted to go over was, again, the problems in the school with the leakage of water. Now spiders have gone into the classrooms scaring kids, which isn't really that surprising. And the amount of, during the winter, when we had snow, some of the teachers last year, they said that they promised us heated sidewalks. I'm not really sure if that was an actual thing. And I see all the custodians out there shoveling off the snow of the, of the sidewalk and I kind of feel bad for them because that was one thing they didn't have to do, that they had to do last year. And I see them doing it right now and I kind of am concerned with that. Any questions?
I mean, I don't, I don't have any questions per se. The glass, obviously, the building, the building's built. I, I understand your concerns with it. First, I want to thank you for taking your time to come here and talk to us and express your concerns with it. I want to tell you how much I appreciate that. As, as far as the lunch, I mean, we can take, we can take that into consideration. We can look into that for a going-forward thing more for next year, probably at this time of the year. As far as the, the stuff you mentioned about like the bullying issues, I'm going to have to defer that to Mr. Schaefer.
So I'm sorry.
It's fine.
That was the experience that you had. That's not, that's not what we...
The school's very left-leaning and not really open to other people's ideas and what they believe. And that's kind of like what we have to like realize in today's society is that people don't, are scared of what other people's opinions and what they have to say instead of laying them, like, laying, laying their ideas for us through the school.
People, nobody wants you to have a day like that. Nobody wants this to be a place where people don't listen to each other, no matter what you think or feel or believe. This needs to be a place where you feel safe and comfortable. Otherwise, you won't be able to, to learn and grow the way we want you to learn and grow. So I want to, I, you know, I, we're on cable. And so what I want to tell you is, when something like this happens, I need you to immediately tell people about it. And I'm telling you that in front of the cable audience.
All this happened in a classroom. All this, all the teachers were fully aware. None, none said anything to any of the students. Not one teacher said anything.
So when I say report that, I want you to also feel safe in reporting things. And meanwhile, I'm telling the whole world to tell you to, I don't want you to feel like you're tattling, but I want you to tell people. And I want you to talk about it. And if you don't feel comfortable telling somebody in the school, I, I think, I think you've got a good person supporting you right there that I want you to tell. And I want, I want him to call us so that we can do something about it. Because I just want to follow up, follow up, follow up to make sure that those things don't happen to you. That I want you to feel safe and protected. So I'm sorry, and I want you to tell us. And if not, I want you to tell somebody at home to tell us so that we can address it right away.
Thank you.
With, with regard to the glass, you know, I want to say that businesses and schools still are not being built like fortresses. And it is concerning that these environments have glass. But everywhere we go in our lives where people could hurt us, banks, airports, movie theaters, architects are going to continue to design buildings with glass. And so the good news about that is that the Alice training does provide options for people in every single environment. Doesn't mean that it's a perfect solution that's necessarily a hundred percent going to save everybody and keep everybody safe.
Yeah, I understand.
But it's better to, that you'll know these options even in a place with glass compared... Because again, everywhere you go, God forbid, something terrible like that could happen. The lunches, I mean, the lunches aren't what you want. They're a whole lot better than when I was in school, that's for sure. Yeah, come on, we said canned, we had canned, I had canned beans. Those are awful. And so we want to provide you something that's nutritious and you like. Sometimes we have to, it's hard to reach that balance because we're required to provide certain amounts of vegetables and things like that in meals. And they're not what you're going to get at home all the time. So that's something we work on. I guess, you know, I don't want you to have to pack a lunch. But the worst-case scenario is, if there was something that you really liked, you could also, you always have that option, which you already know. The, the water and the leakage piece and the spiders, part of that is part of new construction that you get critters because, you know, you, you enclose a building that was open at one point. So we actually, we have what's called an integrated pest management system, which is, is where there are, there are environmentally appropriate, safe traps for spiders and mice and you name it for everything. So some of it's just that it's a new building and everything gets encapsulated. Those things are around. And there is some water leakage. It's more about wind blowing in certain areas that are getting sealed up. That's part of our, that's part of our punch list. But it's not more than anyone would expect with going through, opening a new building. And so I, I admire that you...
Can I just do the ice on the, and the...
Yeah, oh, the, the, yeah, okay.
So we actually do have some heated sidewalks. They're in front, in the front, the auditorium gym entrance and the preschool entrance. But then the rest is not heated. The disadvantage that we had this winter is the very first winter that you put down concrete, you can't use any salt. So you could only use sand. So because we could only use sand, salt melts, the snow melts the ice. So it did require additional custodial time to clean off the snow and ice this winter. And next winter, we'll be able to go back to using the products that we've used in our other schools. The other part is that there was more ice around the building than we've seen at our other schools. And we did have a problem with some drainage. And that's also being repaired this summer so that we won't see those areas of icing that we did last year. But thank you.
Can I, I just want to go back to the, to the piece about you feeling comfortable and safe and people treating you poorly. I just can't, I want to go back to that because I, you, you've said some important things. In my mind, that's, that's the thing that is probably the most troubling. And so I want you to report it. I want you to, to talk to us, please, for you and everybody else. Because we don't want this place to be like that. And if you don't feel comfortable with that, again, please tell somebody at home that can call us. And I admire how you're, you're being courageous, coming in and talking to us.
I'm polite. You're a polite young man.
Thank you.
Articulate.
There's one more thing that I wanted to talk about. The side doors in the morning, they are closed to, to the students. But I've noticed that every other day that I see a couple of teachers going through the side doors and that's kind of concerning. It's, I'm not saying because if they have a car, they get that special privileges. It's all about safety because anybody can bring a weapon into the school, not if they're a student, a teacher, or anybody outside that isn't part of the school.
So just so you know, those doors are FOB activated. You have to have a special pass to open those doors. And so the teachers have those, so only a teacher can go through those doors. And it is a special privilege because they're teachers because they're carrying stuff back and forth from their cars. And we want them to be able to get to their rooms that are located in all sorts of different parts of the building easily. And then we have those restricted-only student entry doors so that they can be better supervised during the, during the entrance. I hear what you're saying, anybody could bring a gun to school. That's absolutely true. But the safest environment is when those student entries are, are limited and well-supervised. And so that's, that's, that's the answer to what's going on there.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk.
No, thank you for showing the courage to come here and letting us know everything. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And what grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. I wish that Dr. Sullivan was here, you know, or that this was brought up earlier so that she could hear it as well. And I just want to say, I agree with you on the food. From years ago, when my daughter was in elementary school, you know, I would go to the school and I would see some of the items. But I thought that, as they got into high school, that the food, from what I'd heard, was better. But that's something I think that we can definitely look into at party. And then I also want to say, I am appalled that this happened to you. I know your mom and my daughter hangs out with your brother. So I know that you have a very nice family. And I think your political views, nobody should make fun of you at all. And I can't see any reason why anybody would call you racist. It's ridiculous. And I feel incredibly sorry that this happened. And I honestly didn't think that our high school was like that. When you hear the accreditations that they're getting and, you know, everything that they're doing, wow, when it comes to, you know, their curriculum and, I don't know, it's like socially, do they need a little more help?
I mean, I think, I think, I don't, in any situation, I don't want to say "our" high school.
school is like that. There are people like that in every walk of life. So I, again, very sorry it happened to you. I just, I, I hope there are other, there are positive things that, that you also experienced there, because I do hear a lot of the positive things as well. I think there's a lot of good that goes on in the school as well. So I know that there's bad people everywhere, but I just don't want to paint the broad brush of the high school, that was all. So thank you. Did you want to speak, sir?
Just really quickly, I want to thank you all for your time. This was not my idea. He came to me and wanted to make this presentation. And as his father, I expect him to be able to communicate his ideas effectively, you know, regardless of what age he is. And I think he did that tonight. So I want to thank you for listening. And it was certainly, from my point as a parent, you know, if he has a problem like that, I'll be sure to let the appropriate people know. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll definitely look into this further as well.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to continue on with the informational items.
Yes.
If, so the other, I'll do the dates to remember, but I also just wanted to point out that we have that evening.
Can you do the scholar leaders again, because I think that got a little bit-
Yeah, they got lost.
Oh, sure. Sure. So our scholar leaders from the middle school are Ryan Tobin and Faith Ryan. Those are two eighth-grade students. And so those are students with, in, in great academic standing, who participate in the life of the school in terms of community service and activities. And so they have a dinner in the central part of the state, where there's a guest keynote speaker for the middle school students that are nominated across the state. Two from each middle school. There might be population dependence, so there might be a few more in that, but it's a, it's a limited number of people that, that win this award. And it's a, it's a really nice evening for their, for the students, their parents, and the administration to go out and to receive this award. So it's a credit to Ryan and Faith. Ryan, yeah, Ryan Tobin and Faith Ryan.
I just wanted to say, I know Ryan and Faith personally, and I couldn't think of two better kids to receive this award. They are hard workers and great kids, and I'm super proud of them and happy that they, they both got that. So, very good. Good job.
And you've got the quarterly reports from North River and Reed's. Did you want to talk about North River?
I just want to mention really quick about North River. So I was a school committee liaison for it for this year. We had a meeting on March 12th. And in that meeting, it was kind of, we kind of decided that what's best to go forward is that maybe have two meetings per year. So we'll say one in the fall, one in the spring, roughly. And instead of just having one person represent, what Steve, I want, Steve is his name, right?
Yep.
So what Steve and I and the rest, and the school committee members that were there came up with is that the fall being almost a introductory, I don't want to, optional informational event for any new school, anybody on a school committee that wants to go, it'll be geared towards new school committee members. But anybody who hasn't, doesn't know what North River does, it would kind of be geared towards that. They would hold one in the fall. And then the spring, kind of have one where, figuring you've been on there almost a year, and anybody wants to come have, share new ideas of things they've learned, how they can help. That's kind of the format they're going with. As such, they had a meeting scheduled for June, I'm going to say 13th, I don't remember the exact date. It was mid-June, that's been canceled. So probably look for information coming maybe in late summer, early fall, going forward. I think we talked about like October, let everybody get back into the swing. So that was it.
And similarly, there's a Reed's quarterly report. And then there's the flyer that Denton had referenced earlier, the ESL Family Night on Wednesday, June 6th. These are for our English language learner students to showcase their work. And there'll be, there'll be a talent show and different cultural activities. So, you know, we're really proud of the work that our English language learners and the progress that they're, that they're making. Was it last year, the Department of Education actually showcased one of our students and their achievement in a video that they published online, that you can access through the Department of Education's website, so. Under Dates to Remember, Friday, May 25th is the senior reception receiving line at Abington High School at 4:30. There's a reception that follows at the Nantasket Beach Resort. On Tuesday, May 29th, the music banquet for our music booster parents at the senior center at 6:30. And then I'm going to insert one here, because it chronologically fits. The senior athletic awards are on May 30th at 6:30 in the middle school cafeteria. On Thursday, May 31st, we have the senior awards evening at Abington High School at 7:00 PM. On June 2nd, we've got the graduation at Abington High School at, at 10:00 AM. I apologize that I won't be there with you. I, I love going to the event, and I'll miss it this year, because my daughter is graduating an hour after that in Pembroke. On Wednesday, June 6th, we have the night that I just described, at the Woodsdale at 7:00 PM. On June 11th, we have our in-service early release day. On Tuesday, June 19th, we have our school committee meeting at 7:00 PM here. And then Wednesday, June 20th, will be our last day for students.
Maybe the Philly trip is in there, 7th to the 9th? I don't know if that's something you include in the dates to remember.
Absolutely. The trip to Philadelphia is June 7th to the 9th for our grade-
Eight.
Eight students.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to go to exec-, I'm going to ask to go to executive session by roll call vote to discuss parameters for negotiating for position of Director of Student Services and not to return to public session. So I'm going to need everybody with a yes or no.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And thank you.
Thank you.[1764.91]